We'll start with our pledge of allegiance. Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone. Today is Tuesday, November 1st, 2022. Let me see, under routine business, you'll find all of the payroll and longevity issues in the file along with the reports. I need a board action to approve consent agenda items.
We need to approve the agenda first, please.
That would be helpful as well. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved, Chair.
Second.
Got a motion at second, any discussion? Clerk call or roll?
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes. Okay, now we can move on to the board action to approve consent agenda items.
So moved.
Got a motion at second, any discussion? Hearing that clerk call or roll?
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes. Under regular business, we'll move on to agenda item number one, board discussion regarding Lennox Ambulance District. And it looks like Nathan Vander Plaats from the city of Lennox has requested time to visit with us today.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, for the opportunity to talk about this issue today. I think several of you were at an informational meeting we held in Lennox several months ago on this for the surrounding area to learn about what we're talking about here. This is a very important issue for the region and as the county continues to develop and grow, making sure that we have essential services available for all areas is of particular importance to us. So in your package, you'll see a short PowerPoint presentation. I'm not going to go directly off of that, but it's the same presentation we've used in all of our other meetings on this with one modification at the end. So the issue that we're looking at here is an issue of fairness in terms of service. The Lennox ambulance service, for those of you not familiar with it, is operated by the city of Lennox as well as by a nonprofit, Lennox Ambulance Squad. So the funding primarily comes from the city of Lennox. It provides emergency medical services, including ALS, for approximately 90-some square miles, 190 square miles in Lincoln and Turner Counties. Goes into Turner County about three miles. You can see on that map in the PowerPoint, I also have another map with me. We have one full-time director, two part-time lead medics, additional part-time and volunteer staff, two ambulances that are both housed in Lennox with a response time of under four minutes, time on scene of under 14. So that ambulance service, just like most in the area, will be increasing in calls every year. In 2021, we had 253 calls in Lennox and 214 outside of Lennox. The pace of increase of those calls is really coming from outside of Lennox. So Lennox has stayed pretty steady, dropped in 2021 after the COVID pandemic in 2020. We had a number of calls related to that in 2020, of course. But we're still seeing growth in our calls. We're at, after October of this year, at 420 calls this year. Total calls last year, 460. So we're definitely on pace to break that again this year. The problem that you have with ambulance services, and this is most ambulance services, is that they don't make money. They lose money. The charges for services are not sufficient, so even when we bill insurance, we don't get paid the full cost of what it is to provide that service. But on top of that, you also have calls that are not billable. If we go and we don't transport a patient, that's not a billable call, even though we spent time, energy, and supplies on that call. So those shortfalls historically have been made up with Lennox tax revenues. We've had some small contributions from surrounding communities, townships, and counties, and we have a ton of residents that come to the annual soup supper and contribute to that. And that's generally used for training and equipment by the squad, not by the city. So the problem we have is that these emergency medical services are available to everybody within this 190-square-mile territory. The revenue from insurance claims is insufficient to cover the cost of the service, and Lennox tax dollars are making up for the difference. The surrounding area does not share in the cost of providing the service, even though they are receiving this service available to them. So without funding, Lennox is in a position where they need to decide how much to invest in those areas that don't invest in the service and what can we do to make it fair. And that's what this is about. It's an issue of fairness. It's no different than if Lincoln County was paying for services available in Minnehaha County. It's not an equitable situation. So state law allows for a solution of that in the creation of an ambulance district. And that will include all the current territory in Turner and Lincoln County, as well as all three municipalities that are included, Chancellor, Worthing, and Lennox. It would establish a levy, just like a town or township would, or a county, that would apply to all properties within its boundaries. And it's capped at a total of $1.10 per thousand. That's what the levy is capped at by state law. I think it's 60 cents for operational and 50 for capital. That would also allow the ambulance district to become fully staffed, answer calls quicker, and ensure that we can recruit the staff we need to run a service. We're still running volunteer mostly. I'd say about 60% of our calls are covered by volunteers at any given time. So there's two processes to get the ambulance district established. There can be a petition by the voters, or the governing bodies of each jurisdiction can pass a resolution. And that resolution is the route that we've chosen to pursue. At this point, all of the other jurisdictions have passed the resolution. Lennox was the first to pass it, then Worthing. So Chancellor passed it for their entire town. If you look at the map, you might not be able to see this in the detail, but only about a third of Lennox, of Chancellor, is in the Lennox territory right now. Chancellor said if we're going to pass it, we need to pass it for the whole community. Otherwise, there's going to be two separate tax areas within the same municipality. So it's growing by just a little bit there. And then Turner County passed it about a month ago. So if voters were to approve, the ambulance would form an ambulance district as soon as we can, and we'd establish that levy, establish the board, and so on and so forth. One of the questions that continually pops up at these meetings and in conversations I have with particularly rural landowners is that state law right now does not distinguish between agricultural and owner-occupied property in terms of how they tax it under ambulance and fire districts. We've talked to a few legislators about that, and there are other areas that are looking at an ambulance district as well. I think Pier is an area by Rapid City that's looking at an ambulance district as well. And it sounds like there are going to be at least two bills introduced this next session that address that very issue. And so without speaking, without having a vote yet, I would say that it's highly likely the city of Lennox would be supportive of that effort as well. And we'll do whatever we need to do in Pier, whether it's appearing or providing testimony to be sure that that gets some traction. I think that's an issue that needs to be addressed in how the state law was written. So right now, we're estimating the levy to be at about 50 cents total. That's really difficult to say, and we can't really establish that. It's not going to be the city's tax district. It will be on its own with its own governing body. But we feel that 50 cents per thousand would probably pay for what we needed to pay for initially. So if you're looking at what tax increases would look like, you know, for $100,000 home, 50 bucks a year, and then upwards from there. So I did see in the packet there was some public input handout on EMS regional service designations and the governor's budget and the legislature's appropriation for those studies. I think that's, I think it's timely. I think it's important that the state does this, but this is something that we've studied for years already. You know, the study of this issue for us has been beaten to death at this point. And we already, I mean, if you look at what we have here in Lennox, we're serving 190-square-miles. It's already a regional ambulance service. The issue is that it's not funded in equitable way. And that's the issue you're going to come across with any regional service. If you're going to do a regional system, it has to be funded regionally and not just by one jurisdiction. So again, today, we're simply introducing the idea. The resolution that we're recommending is in your packets as well. That's nearly identical to the other resolutions that have been passed by the other jurisdictions. My hope is that we could have this on a future agenda for action, to take up that resolution, calling for a vote of the people to establish this district or on the question of establishing the district. And if we could do that, if we could have that passed by the end of this year, you know, speaking with the auditors of each county, my hope would be that we could hold the election around the same time as the school and municipal elections next spring. And that would be early April.
Nate, I have a couple of questions for you. When you established this levy, did you, how did that, I mean, 50 cents? Right now, the county is struggling with trying to determine what impact we will have on the voters with the potential building of a jail, or building of courtrooms, I meant to say. Does that, did you determine a budget overall, and that's what it was needed to cover, fully cover?
Yes.
So you mentioned you would have a full, complete staff, right?
Yes.
Any new equipment or anything like that?
No, we've got it right away.
That's a pretty good, that's a pretty good tax bite, you know? I mean, for the voters to look at. And you want something like this because this is a critical situation. And, you know, you don't want to throw this out there and have it beat back at you. So I'm just wondering if, when you looked at that 50 cents, how much room you had to play with that at all? That's just my own suggestion. You don't have to take it for what it's worth.
Yeah. I think, you know, one of the things we looked at when we did the budget, the draft budget for this, just to come up with what we think an appropriate level would be, we looked at the most what we would need to do.
Okay.
So this is, this levy would make it possible for us to start building up a reserve fund for capital purchases, capital expenses, but also fully staff that ambulance service. If the board does not see it necessary at this point, you know, if the ambulance district were established and the board says we don't need full staff yet, that levy would obviously be lower. That's just simply something that that board is going to have to take up at the time.
The board that you have, is that an elected board or is that an appointed board? Who selects the ambulance board right now?
Right now, there is no ambulance board. There's a board of the ambulance squad, of that nonprofit.
Yeah.
That's chosen among its members. But there is no, when a district is established, then the voters would elect a board.
So people would run for, or be elected at large?
That's my understanding.
Yeah.
And I think if, you know, my recommendation has been, if it makes sense, make sure each jurisdiction is represented on that board.
Oh, sure.
Someone that represents Lincoln County at large, Turner County at large, Lennox at large.
So that's your board?
Yeah.
Makes sense. Okay. Of the seven and a half million approximately recommended from the governor's office for identification and designation of EMS services, what percentage do you think maybe you could get to that if that goes through?
We don't know.
You don't?
We don't know. I don't know that we'd even apply for it, Commissioner. Yeah, it is an important issue. I think it's really important for some areas to look at this. We came to a conclusion that this is something that we already know is needed. You know, we're losing money. You know, next year, we budgeted for a loss of $75,000, all covered by Lennox taxpayers. To us, the issue is not whether a regional service is necessary, it's how do you fund it?
Gotcha.
And that's what the funds are for, is to study regionalization, not to fund any sort of services.
If you're in that area, you know, around Worthing and so forth, where the map goes there, and it looks like some of that area might be served by Canton, some of that area might be served by Lennox, the 911 dispatcher, do they dispatch then if it's you or if it's Canton, or how do they determine that? And as the family, can they say, no, we would prefer to have somebody else come? Or, I mean, how is that handled when you're kind of in that area of the divide there of the map?
Alan Perry, our EMS director, answer that one.
The map's laid out according to how dispatch is supposed to be sent out. So if you call in, your 919 either pulls up in their system, and then they send out the appropriate ambulance from there. So if you are on the Lennox side, you get Lennox ambulance. If you're on the Canton side, you get Canton ambulance. Occasionally, there are some requests that are made. They're not always granted by dispatch, but sometimes they are.
Okay.
Nathan, thanks for coming here. Certainly, emergency medical services are important. They're incredibly important to people who need them at the time when they call for them. Certainly, there's an expectation, I think, today that when you call, there's someone on the other end of the line that's going to answer.
Mr. Chair, I have one question yet. In regard to, I know the meeting that you had a couple months ago in Lennox, there were those from the agriculture sector kind of concerned about the tax burden that they would seem to endure much more than other citizens in that district. Are there some modifications you've made in regard to that since that meeting or not?
We can't make modifications to that, only the state can. And so that's why that whole discussion is part of what led to these efforts at the legislature. I learned about some of them, that, you know, we had had some early conversations, and then learned that legislators from the Pier and the Black Hills area, I think it's Rapid City, but I can't remember for sure, were having the same conversations about those challenges. If it's agricultural land, in a fire or ambulance district, it's taxed just like owner-occupied is. We think that's a flaw in how the state law was written, and it's something they need to correct. Our hope is that they can get a bill passed this session, but it sounds like there's going to be multiple ones, and how those come together, who makes it to a committee hearing, so on and so forth. We would, again, not speaking for the Lennox city council because they have not voted on this matter, but my guess is they would support, fully support a resolution, asking for agricultural land to be taxed the same way it is on other districts.
This process, are you thinking, what are you looking at for a finish date? Are you thinking maybe two years from now, or three years, or 18 months? What is your goal?
I think if we were to have it running by 2025, we'd be in good shape. You know, you've got, if we were to say the election is in April of next year, you're going to spend that next few months getting everything set up. You'll have to have your board, so on and so forth. I think the initial board chairman, or Mr. Schmidt, is appointed, and then it's elected after that. Once you've got that all set, you're, again, your property taxes are in arrears. So we wouldn't, that district would not take in any funding until 2024, and then would not really have sufficient funding to do anything until 2025. So the city is planning on continuing this until such point that the district can operate on its own, which we think will be either late '24 or early '25.
So if I understand you correctly, you're basically here, idiot, asking for our endorsement somewhere down the line, much like our neighbors in County to the West and so forth?
Endorsement of a vote is what the resolution is calling for, a vote. That's it. You know, this is, this is an issue that's up to the voters, not up to the governing jurisdictions. And that's what we're asking.
Okay. Thank you.
Here's where I was going with that. Given the importance of this, I think it's important that we get some of these questions answered before taking a vote. So number one, do you know with any certainty whether this board is appointed or elected right from the get-go? And it sounds like you don't, right?
I'll have to check it.
Okay. So the second thing is here, and I do want to preface my comments with, I was at the meeting that you guys held in Lennox. Thank you for doing that. There were a lot of questions from taxpayers and citizens. And I thought a really interesting question from one gentleman was to the effect of, why are you asking for the 50-cent levy when you admit from the get-go you don't need it? There's a lot of concern out there from taxpayers right now about why does the government, regardless of what entity or what level, whether it's an ambulance district all the way going up to Congress? Why do you always ask for the maximum dollar amount from the get-go instead of just asking for what you think you need? So here's my first question. What is the deficit you're running right now, and how much money do you need as opposed to how much money you want? So what is that dollar amount?
Mr. Chair, I'll have to get back to you on that. I think the trick is coming up with the, you know, we have to look at what the current taxable values are. Right now, we're burning off of last year's numbers. With regard to the, why you ask for the, for more, you know, this is not the maximum, but I get what you're asking. If the, if the board were to say at some point that they need to be fully staffed, and they set that levy too low to do that from the start, they will have difficulty getting there because counties, cities, townships can only increase their levy by CPI plus growth every year. So if they, if that initial board were to set the levy at 10 cents per thousand for operational needs, but to fully staff, they need to do 20 cents per thousand, they will not get there for several years, simply because the state restricts how quickly you can, or how you can grow that tax levy.
Well, you can go back and do an election.
You could.
And what you're forgetting to tell people, especially taxpayers, is it's not that you can't go back and get it, it's just you don't, you want to avoid having to go back to taxpayers with another election in order to do it. And I think this is the concern that the public has with regard to this issue, is they say, this is about safety and security, so why aren't you just being a little more palms up about this with regard to these costs and the process and the procedure, instead of just asking for the brass ring right away? So I think that's a big concern. I think it'd be an easier sell for people if you just kind of said, hey, last year, we ran a deficit of, what was it, 75,000?
Give or take.
And how much is, how much would you need to do per 1,000 in order to make up that deficit plus CPI? Because there was a lot of resistance in that room right there with, I mean, think about it. This is what I walked away with. There were a lot of folks in the ag community in that room who showed a lot of resistance to wanting to have their taxes raised. And at the same time, they could be sucked up in a bin, or on the side of the road, or even worse, their kid has an allergic reaction and needs an ambulance to come and get them. So you could actually see in the room, these people balancing those two very real concerns, right? And I think you all need to balance those concerns too, and I don't think you have. You just said, oop, I want the 50 cents right away, instead of being a little more particular and more surgical about this process. And I think that's the concern that you're going to have with the taxpayers, is you need to be more surgical instead of just asking for the maximum dollar amount right away. And that shows in the resistance that you're getting from taxpayers out there. Because right now, these taxpayers have to make very real decisions about paying their cost. I think you all ought to exercise that same level of balance that they are. Now, here's the next question I have. And I, is, you say that you run a deficit of 75K, and I assume, do you send a bill to every single user?
A bill is sent to every transported patient.
Okay.
Yes.
And so I assume not, there's a combination of, guy's got an insurance company, one insurance company pays 1,000, another insurance company pays 500, Medicare or Medicaid may pay pennies on the dollar. And then I assume there's just some people who flat-out don't pay at all, right?
Correct.
So, and what you're trying to do is you're trying to level that out, because some people with the really good insurance end up subsidizing the people who don't pay at all.
Correct.
Now, the people who don't pay at all, do you go to small claims with those cases?
Collections.
Collections.
Yep.
But do you go to small claims and reduce it down to a judgment?
Have we?
Right? So collections, you can stonewall collections all day long. So what I'm saying is, are you willing, as a part of this process, to implement a business practice where you reduce these collections down to a judgment? So for example, taxpayers know that, there's a lot of people out there, first of all, everyone deserves a response to a medical, you know, a serious medical incident. And a lot of times, these people may be, and I don't know your patient population, the ages or whatnot, but when they pass away, many years hopefully from when the incident happens, they leave an estate. I think the taxpayers would like to see that recovered somehow. And if you don't implement that as part of your business practice, that's why you're running a deficit, because you haven't implemented a financial cost recovery system that reduces the cost down to a judgment. Just, you know, hospitals always get paid. You know why? They send them to collections, and then it goes to a judgment, and they get a small claims. And they may not get paid for many years, but they do eventually get paid. So I think these are some of the financial kind of accounting issues and legal issues that you guys need to put into practice now. So that way, when you, the next time when you walk into that room with all those resistant farmers, you can tell them, we've done everything we need to in order to reduce the burden to the taxpayer. And I think right now, the concern is, you haven't done every single thing you can to reduce the burden to the taxpayer. I think you'd probably agree with me on that, right?
I think we could certainly do the small claims. I don't disagree with that at all.
Now, the last thing-
It will not reduce our loss to the point where we're operating at a net gain.
Right. It'll take a few years, because they're in the pipeline, but you will start to see cost recovery coming in.
Yes.
Now, the last question I have is, if this is so important, why don't you just go out and collect the signatures yourselves to put this thing on the ballot?
Quite frankly, the resolution process is far less time-intensive.
But it's important. And if it's so important, I would think you'd want to take the time to go out there door to door, collect all those signatures to put it on the ballot.
I think the, if the issue is having, whether this is voter-initiated or not, the voters, regardless of how it's initiated, have the ultimate speak on this. They're the ones that get to decide. So whether it happens by resolution through the governing bodies or not, or whether it happens by petition or not, either way, the voters have the ultimate say in what happens with this. And that's, you know, the state law allows for that process for that very reason.
I want to thank you for being here today and answering these questions. I appreciate it. Does anybody else have questions?
Can I follow up with an email on some of your questions later?
Of course. Absolutely.
Yes, I do. Action Chair, good morning, Nick. Let's get past some of the discussion that has been here. One of the issues is the geographical location of the line. That is of interest to me. How, any data that you have currently of where calls are at, what the severity the calls are, if they're life-threatening, not life-threatening, any of that data would be pertinent to me to make a decision, because there's two facets here, whether or not to support it at all, and then where should it be? And I want to really focus on that type of information, which I would need, you know, are we truly servicing, I'm assuming, 57th Street? Are we sending calls up there or not? Are we sending calls up there or not?
No, it'd be, it'd be county line.
That is 57th Street.
To the west of Sioux Falls, though.
Yes.
Yep.
If you have that data, we don't have it here. I would like to see it.
We'll make sure that gets to you. I have some here, but I don't think I can hand it out without-
Sure.
Putting it on the public table as well.
And the same thing is, are they life-threatening calls? Are they, you know, what type of call? Is it, is it a situation where, point blank, are we losing lives by not having inadequate service currently? And then how are other communities handling these short falls? Because I'm assuming you're not alone in that. So I would like to know if you would mind collecting data from Canton, Beersford, how those communities handle their budget when it comes to ambulance service? That would be great, so.
Do you know that offhand?
I don't know that offhand. You know currently, there's about 20 other tax districts without, throughout the state. And I know personally of five more that are working on the process right now. You're going to see this, this trend grow significantly going forward because they're running into the same issues that we are. There's less people to do the job for free. Why they ever designed a healthcare system where you're going out to save people's lives and expecting people to do it for free, I will never know. But we're coming up against that where the volunteerism is dying and we need to fill those positions. And so this is, it's not just our issue, it's, it's an issue across the state. Many, many locations are dealing with the same protocols and looking at how do we make up that difference?
Yeah, I'm very familiar with that. I am father of two EMTs, one of actually that has served for the Lenox Ambulance. She did it proudly. And now is in medical school out in Los Angeles. So I think the training she has gotten is being used as, I think, fulfilled her destiny. And the other one is in Lincoln, trying to figure out how to get onto the ambulance service down there with his work schedule. So he is too, trying to use his training. Because they do, you do rely on volunteers. It is not an easy process to become an EMT and paramedic even then some. So I do understand all of that, but it comes down to our decision. And there's some opposition, as you well can hear, a lot of questions. And for, for me, I do understand the need to have adequate service. I think there's a blend in here somewhere, but a big, big question for me would be is making sure the, the line, because there's going to be a huge difference if you're on one side lined versus the other side lined. And so we need to have those, that data. So, thank you.
Nate, just so we didn't get too far, what you're asking from Lincoln County is that we approve your ability to put out a resolution to those individuals that are in the district for a yea and nay approval of what this calls for, correct?
Correct.
That's all?
Yep.
Okay.
It's asking for a vote.
Yep. Thank you.
If the vote were to be approved, would it take place in a special election or would you conjoin it with a primary or general election in order to, A, maximize voter participation and awareness, and B, in order to reduce the cost to the county as well as to the municipalities?
Our plan right now is to mix it in, is to hold it at the same time as the municipal elections in April. And then we'd have to work with both auditors to figure out how we consolidate precincts for that. Because the city election in Lenox, for example, is held in one location. County elections are held in another location. Well, how do we, logistically, how do we do that?
So you want to make it more difficult for people who live in the rural areas to vote at their regular precinct by, so you would want them to vote at their regular precinct, but you said you were going to consolidate precincts? Which one is it?
Whether it makes sense to, yeah. I mean, if, if we've got city voters voting at one location, some of whom in a regular election would vote at the other location, rural voters voting at several locations, we just, logistically, we have to figure out how exactly that would happen.
And isn't voter turnout traditionally smaller at municipal elections than for primaries and general elections?
It is.
Wouldn't you want to bootstrap on to times when more voters are going to the polls?
We certainly can. I've got no objection with that. I, I think in terms of the number of people that are going to be voting, or a number of people that are in this, this proposed district, the vast majority of them typically vote in April for their municipal elections. If, if we hold that in June, I've got no objection to that. It simply pushes the schedule back a little bit.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Nate. Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Is there any more questions or comments? All right, at this time, does the public, are there any public comments to be made to the agenda item? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the next agenda item, Board Action to Approve Purchase of Snow Equipment for New Trucks. Terry Floyd.
Good morning. Here this morning looking for permission to purchase the snow equipment, the boxes and snow equipment for the new trucks we ordered. This will be through sanitation products. We're going to be purchasing items off of Sourcewell bidding, and we're going to be getting hanky equipment, so. The cost is, it's going to be $163,230 per truck. And I have two trucks.
In your budget, Terry?
Yes, it is.
Move for approval.
Is there a second?
I'll second for discussion, yes.
Got a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? So this is the first time I'm doing this, but the way, I guess Commissioner Poppins suggested to me is that before there's any commission discussion or questions on the issue, we'll take some public input on it as well. So is there anybody from the public that would like to speak to this agenda item? Okay, seeing none. I'll open it up to the commissioners for discussion.
Terry, what's the availability of this equipment? When would we see it? When will the operation-
We're six months out.
And this was included in next year's budget, then?
Correct.
Okay.
So we have two trucks that we ordered back in March. I just got an email earlier this week that one of them is now in. So the trucks should be here this year. So we'll be, again, we just purchased chassis only, so. And this will be for boxes, lift system, wings and plows.
So we, we pay for them now? I mean, when, if you have one ready right now, you would pay for one now, then?
So-
We can use it immediately, or?
No, 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 no.
How does this work?
The trucks are, one of the trucks just showed up, up at the dealer this week. Okay? That's just truck only, chassis. There's no equipment on it. So we won't be getting equipment for these until probably at the earliest June next year, maybe? I'm hoping. So hopefully, we will have them in use July, August. Because typically, it'll take them about probably two weeks to build per truck, so.
Maybe an unrelated question, but I think it's pertinent to our operations. Given our timelines have begun very stretched out for when a truck can come in or another piece of equipment come in. Warranties, when do they take effect? When we take delivery of the chassis, or do we get to offset that until the vehicle's actually placed in service?
I think when the date it's placed in service.
This would replace two current ones right now, or we'd also continue to use?
So the trucks we purchased in March, yes. They're going to be replacing a couple older ones.
Any other questions or comments for Terry?
Mr. Chair, call the question, please.
All right. There's a request to call the question. If there's not any other discussion or comments, Clerk will call the roll.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Aaronson.
Yes.
Next item I have for you, it's authorized to go to bid for a 2023 bid bridge project. Again, we have two structures that we're going to be replacing. One is 42110253. This structure is on 475th Avenue. If you recall, a year and a half ago or so, this is a structure we closed because the pipeline was going over it. So we'll be replacing that one. And then there's a structure about three quarters of a mile away from this one on the county highway 152. It's a very narrow box cover that is going to be getting replaced as well on part of this. We'll be advertising for the next couple of weeks and we'll be opening bids, I believe it's November 22nd, I believe. Cost estimate on this project is $644,271.
Move to approve to advertise.
Got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Is there any discussion from the public on this agenda item? Okay, seeing none. Is there any discussion from the board? Hearing none, Clerk will call the roll.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Aaronson.
Yes. Thank you. Next agenda item, Board Discussion on Courthouse Cost Estimates from Bill Goldblum.
Commissioner Landine had asked for some additional cost estimates on the courthouse. They, being Dick Strasberg, was attempting to get those numbers put together. There's been some technical difficulties with the software from Henry Carlson in order to get the actual numbers. And so I'm just requesting that one to be moved to the next meeting.
While we're discussing this, there's two questions I have about the cost as well. So under one proposal, I think it's called, is it called the Greenways Proposal? Am I using the right term?
The Greenfield, is that-
Greenfield, Greenfield, which essentially is the Darcy Johnston property.
Yes.
Has there, do we know, have we received what the cost of having to purchase the land would be?
No.
Okay. And then the second thing is, and this is more of a clarification probably, but my understanding was that Dick Strasberg and his team coordinated with City of Canton on the cost of bringing the sewer from the city trunk line to the proposed Greenfield site. And I seem to recall that the dollar amount was about $10 million. Can you help me in remembering whether or not there was going to be any assistance from the City of Canton with that? Or was the county going to be responsible for that?
My recollection is that the city was looking for a grant for $5 million.
Okay. And I suppose there's probably no update on that at this time?
There is not.
Okay. So, thank you. I appreciate it. You've- Yeah, go ahead. Is there any other discussion from members?
Action Chair, I could give a little insight. I've asked actually for the city to send their information because I have verbally spoke with their mayor, who appointed me to, or directed me to speak with their manager. They've been, they verbally indicated they receive that grant funding, which is going to be a matching with our ARPA funds to do half of that project approximately. But again, I, I don't know why we haven't seen that presented or informed anyone officially. The question still comes is, Darcy Johnston, there's still $5 million scenario that has to be resolved of how to get the rest of the sewer out there, as well as what that land is. To me, the Greenfield site, until those answers are, are given, is not on the table. No different than when we first looked at doing a proposal several years ago, with the knowledge of, that the municipality of Canton did not have a build-ready site at that time, nor any plan for a build-ready site. It is, I think, pertinent that we keep moving in a direction that will solidify an answer to the growing question of how soon can we get a courtroom up and functioning? We've been directed to make this courtroom available to the court services indefinitely until that is done. So for us to, although I believe there's some merit to a Greenfield site, if we don't have the answer for sure of what that land is, I don't know that anyone's been directed to negotiate with the owner of that property as to what it will cost, nor if, if there's a consensus, and I do not support that the taxpayers of the whole county have to place the remaining $5 million to make that site a build, build-ready site. It's just not on the table for me. And that is unfortunate, but that is the reality is, as, as back in '04, when we move forward on this facility, the reality is, government, you have to get done what you can get done. It's not the great answer, but it is the answer that we operate in. So I don't want to delay moving forward with something that will alleviate the, the space needs that we need if we don't have the answers to those questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other commissioners? Any members of the public on this agenda item? All right, seeing none, we will schedule board discussion on that issue to date and time when Dick Strasberg reports back to us with, with the assistance of Henry Carlson Company. At this point in time, I want to invite the public up for opportunity for public comment. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak? Okay, seeing none. I'll open the floor to Commissioner reports. Are there any individual commissioners who would like to provide a report?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I have given to each commissioner the results of the summer study conducted by the legislature on regional jails. You have the, the report itself and what its findings were, and some of the highlights of what recommendations they are going to make. And following that, you also have a draft piece of legislation that has been put together, which is, digs rather deep into the entire process and covers most of the issues that need to be done, setting up authorities and how we're going to, this would be structured. Long story short, what it amounts to is that there will be some funding, which we don't know, I mean, that has to go through appropriations in the state, that would be made available to county or counties that wish to pursue this on a grant basis. Or it may be on a loan basis as well through the Ready Fund. But it does set the process in motion. And I think the most advanced one that if we are looking at a regional concept would be Brown County, which does have a facility that they can convert to a regional jail. And they have purchased property and they've been in negotiations with surrounding counties. For example, Walworth County sends most of their prisoners down to Winter, but they don't have one. But anyway, this is something that we can read. I know we've talked about that because I know we're not into the jail thing at the present time because we're doing the courtroom, as Commissioner Poppins has stated. But it is something for us to look at for potential as we explore this. And the interesting vote will be what happens in Union County, or not Union County, but Clay County here in what?
One week.
One week from today, to see where their taxpayers are in relative to their proposal to build their own jail. So anyway, it's for your edification. I think it's very complete and, and answers a lot of questions. Thank you.
Yeah, I think Commissioner Schmidt, thank you for pointing this out, providing this. I think as it stands right now, Minnehaha County has a jail to the north of us, Union County has a jail to the south of us. County has a jail to the south of us, Yankton County has a jail to the west of Clay County. And we're waiting to see if Clay County voters are going to approve their jail. And then, that only leaves Turner County, which has a pretty low average daily population. Some days, they don't even have people, would be the only other person in our region, county, excuse me. So, I think regionalization is, it's a hot topic, and there was a lot of discussion. I remember Jean Bender giving her testimony up there, where she was very complimentary of the relationship between Lincoln County and, and Minnehaha County. So, certainly, she thought it was, I think, paraphrasing her words, she thought it was a shining example of the ability of counties to cooperate with each other. And so, that certainly is good. There's probably about 10 pages of legislation here. This will take a little bit to go through. I think most of it is based upon the Railroad Authority, if I'm not mistaken, or Rail Commission. And that was a proposal floated by Toby Morris when, when he was up there providing some testimony to the Regional Jail Committee. Looks like if we, do we have any other commissioners who would like to provide a report?
Comment on the regional jail?
Yeah.
Acting Chair. If we were to go to propose to do a regional jail, I would sure hope, although Minnehaha County has been relatively good to us over the years, I would hardly consider it a regional jail. We have been a tenant in their facility. We have paid to build their facility. Of course, they're going to look at us as being a shining star. If we do someday present to build a jail, and we want it to truly be a regional jail, I hope we allow that whatever county or entity, whatever, to have actually a seat at the table and make decisions and discussions other than giving them a bill that says, hey, pay this, or you're not part of it. That is not what I would consider to be advantageous to regional, regionalization. So, that is my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other commissioners? Okay. So, at this time, we do have a request for executive session. So, I'm going to ask for a motion for executive session under SDCL 1-25-2, sub 3. Is there a need for any other provisions of the code?
No.
Okay. So, I'd ask for a motion to that extent, please.
So, move, Mr. Chair, on the executive session.
Second.
Got a motion and second. Is there any comment from the public? Okay, hearing none. Any comment from the board? Hearing none, clerk will call the roll.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Erns?
Yes. Okay, we'll be in executive session. Thank you.
For adjournment?
No, come on, executive session.
Come on, executive session, second.
Clerk will call the roll.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Erns?
Yes, we're out of executive session. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Got a motion and second, any discussion, hearing none. Clerk will call the roll.
Motion by Poppins, second by Schmidt?
Yes.
Correct.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Erns?
Yes, thank you.